People in the industry saying, "Well, this should really be based on tier size." So, the only reason that I submitted an additional application was because of time sensitivity. I thought, okay, just to back myself up, I'm gonna submit another application, 'cause I know I can get it through there really quickly. And if somebody at the commission... Sometimes it's hard to get responses from them. If somebody says, "Oh, you know what? We don't think that this does need a separate application, because this is irrelevant." But all I wanna do is just get it moving so that...
In case they delineate...
Make one mistake, it becomes a black mark.
You're trying to get ahead of this, in case they delineate. And as I understand it, you want to use indoor basically, at least for a nursery, for outdoor, and to have several seasonal growths, grow through the winter indoor.
Exactly.
In a multi-week session, as opposed to just being outdoor once a year.
Definitely.
Which is what I understood we were doing in the first place, is what I had expected in the first place. So, I don't... You know, when we talk about compliance of bylaws and ordinances, I don't think we're talking about this existing facility that's running. I think we're talking about as far as he's proceeding for this license, that he's complied with our rules and our requests, that he's gone through the departments and gotten the approvals that he needed to do, you know, to comply with the town's rules in the process. And I think if we got to the point that he has the... I'd have to review our process of who he talks to first and when, but he wouldn't have his building permit until he's gotten through those hoops, I don't believe. So, it should be a quick process, I would think. We're not saying that his site is up to all code and everything, that he's growing outside. We're talking about licensing for the indoor, that he's done the right process to get the indoor. Which, as far as I am concerned, we did that in the first place. A year ago. In other words, this may not even be necessary, he's doing this, because it looks like they may split this into indoor/outdoor, into a hybrid. He has an outdoor box checked, that he's doing this to, just in case, to keep the indoor going.
Timing is critical.
For right now, that...
Yeah, timing is critical.
It should be under the tier.
Our greenhouse should be ready for inspection from Brianna in two, three weeks, so...
I think unfortunately, the state's gonna keep changing these things every so many months for a couple of years, till they get this regulated how they want it. As you recall, we wrote the host agreement a second time. We put two big signatures out the first time. And then a third time, because they changed the agreement process to be a general grow instead of medical grow, as I recall.
Right. Well, the terms changed, so they spelled out that it was 3% five years, and it's no longer...
Right, and it was no longer medical grow versus a grow, it's just a grow. And it's so... Selling is different, not the growing.
So, this particular application is for what portion of your parcel that's different than the original? This is for the outdoor?
Nothing.
Nothing. It's for the exact same portion of the parcel, it's simply for that greenhouse.
Just to check an inside box instead of an outside box.
Okay, so...
It's basically made...
That's all I'm...
Right. It's everything we've improved and done, he just needs to check a box for inside now as well, which he didn't have to before, he's doing this just in case.
I'm just trying to break down what part I...
Yeah.
Again, I remember our original discussion had a lot to do with you were building an indoor facility.
Yep.
And so, the greenhouse is an indoor facility, so that's why I was questioning, is this application for the outdoor portion? Because that's not what we were discussing originally.
Right.
Right. When they gave him his tier license, they didn't restrict indoor/outdoor, so he wanted to get outdoor on the ground, so he checked the outdoor box.
Exactly.
And now, if they want us in indoor box, he wants to get that going, but this is what we've already approved for. So, I would believe very firmly that all the bylaws and ordinances have been met to get to this point, to get to the construction stage, that he did. And we're still proceeding on what he's done before, which is all in compliance, we're just repeating it so he can check into the application box. But I'm sure if we talked to the fire chief, I know he's toward the facility, I would assume the police chief is toward the facility, I'm sure Brianna's toward the facility.
Again, the only thing I think I'm really questioning here, I think everybody else is just gonna say, "Yes, yes, yes, yes." We've gotta just double-check if anything in our general bylaw that passed regarding the Board of Selectmen's licensing authority still needs to be completed at the stage of the development they're at. It might be something that, until you reach a certain point, they didn't have to do anything with us. And then they reach a certain point, now they have to do something.
So, you're concerned...
I'm not saying that if it's... I'm not suggesting we don't act on this, if there's something he needs to do that's still relying for us to define what that is.
Mm-hmm.
But we've gotta determine what that is, so we can appropriately identify, yes, he's good, and with him, we follow up with, you're gonna have to come back at this time when we finish our side, so you know what we're asking you to do. Because we haven't gone through those policies yet. And I don't wanna hold this up, because we may have a bylaw in place that's relying on a policy that hasn't been written. Because that's kinda where we're at. We have a bylaw in place that says, you need a license from the Board of Selectmen to operate there. Just like a liquor license, there's an annual license process that we wrote into the general bylaw, so every year you're gonna have a certain fee you pay to say, "Yes, I'm a legally established license." That hasn't happened. Without a fee schedule, technically, it might just be provide the paperwork. We haven't written a fee schedule, so there is no fee, but you still gotta provide the paperwork that says, "You're... I don't know." But I need Andrew to look into that, so that we can not lie to the state by accident.
All right.
Because I don't think we'd be intending to do that, but it's... It is a bylaw in place, and they didn't say, "Just zoning." The admissive penalty confirms that the applicant's proposed marijuana establishment is in compliance with municipal bylaws or ordinances.
Have either of our bylaws been sent back as approved and accepted by the state yet? There's a lot of gray...
That's an interesting story, because I never tend to get that answer.
Okay, but my thought is this, we've already approved this, we've approved this facility. We've approved this grow, we've approved this plot and this land and this business, we've already done this. This, to me, is preceding the bylaws, preceding all of this stuff, it's grandfathered in exclusively...
It's not.
Up until the bylaws.
Host community agreement did not grandfather anything.
No, but we had an agreement that grandfathered it up until that.
Oh, the bylaws might have, because you had those put in.
One thing, the host... My host community agreement does have a clause that says, if at some point you impose in will fees, that requires payment.
That you are required, yeah.
Yeah, so it's already in the host agreement that you have.
Right.
And if, you know, in January, if you create fees, then at that point, we're...
But if we're not prepared with the fee schedule...
And that's all I meant, because of that, it may not be the fees, it's... We look at the general bylaw, and it may just be register yourself with the Board of Selectmen as an official licensed cultivator in the town of Berry.
Priority thing.
And then we come back to you. We haven't established the entire infrastructure for that on our side. So, it may just mean that we recognize the situation, and we're not prepared for it, but we don't wanna hold you up. But I need... I'm asking Andrew to look into that, to make sure that we don't overlook something. I still expect that it's very likely within three to four days, we're gonna get all our answers. We'll get the emails, saying, "We've confirmed, here's the follow-up," but it's not a follow-up required prior to us sending this back to the state. So, I'm not looking for something to hold this up. I just don't want something to come up where someone else can come after us later, saying, "Well, you didn't really follow the law." And I don't remember verbatim how we wrote that general bylaw, so I don't wanna step on myself here. So, I just wanna make sure we review it, and make sure we're not saying something that isn't accurate, even if it's the Board of Selectmen's fault, because we didn't follow up with the procedures.
Good.
So, I'm hoping that that's exactly what can happen.
And I just add to that, to make sure it is applicable, because this did pre-exist the bylaws. Our host agreement with this company and this grow, and the agreement to help him move forward, getting the license, you know, was before any of these, like, the bylaws came into effect. So, I'd also just check whether or not those bylaws are really applicable to this site.
And I'm willing to consider that. I'm not saying they just are.
It may be able to end right there, but otherwise, I think you're right, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but...
We just wanna ask a couple of questions, I'm hoping by the end of the week, we get all our answers, and I'm filling this out.
Yeah.
And we're mailing it out by the end of the week, so...
Certainly two weeks is another reason.
That's the goal. I don't see it being an issue, but that is something where I guess, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting, to start the discussion on the policies we need to fill in.
Make sure everyone out there understands why it's here and what's going on, because it's confusing. Took me a couple of times asking to figure out and understand what and why, but it's simple enough.
So, thank you very much.
It doesn't change what you do, it doesn't play... Change what you told this town you do at the meetings, it doesn't change anything about the site.
It's a timing thing, obviously, though, so...
Right.
It could change something if we're not timely.
Yeah, but it doesn't... It doesn't change what we expected to see in the site when we made the host agreement, so that's why I might make it...
I'm not surprised at what you're doing up there. I'm not like, "Oh, you did what?"
It's not changing anything that you expected from the agreement.
So, I guess the... To simplify the motion I said earlier is, I'd like to make a motion that we just follow up on the compliance to our municipal bylaws, and send an email out to the Board of Selectmen as a whole, when you get that confirmation, and any follow-up items that may come. Assuming we're all good, then...
You can get back to...
I can come back, sign it, we can get the letter out.
Second motion.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, sir. Okay, that was one item. Next item. Anybody here for anything but the next host community agreement that may be brought up? If so, I'll ask for public comment now. Okay. Let's move on to the host community agreement presented by Ron Higgins.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure the speakers are plugged in, they have... I got a text that's probably... No voice coming over the...
They're lit up.
So, they're lit up, so they should be... All right. I brought up a request letter, this afternoon, you guys should have the copy of the request along with the host community agreement for you guys. This is kind of being put forth toward the property 101 Don Road in Barry. And we're looking to pursue that farm, to basically save the farm, as I call it. And living there is my daughter, which couldn't make it tonight, because she's watching the kids. Liam is here, lives there, and he's also got a background that I'd like you guys to know about, you know, kinda you guys, you know me, and you know a family that we're dealing with. And Liam comes from a background that kinda pertains to a host community agreement. His name's Alden, he's on a lot of... Can tell you where he's doing.
Good to meet you, thank you for coming.
Yeah, good to see you guys.
Yeah, I have growers, so he knows what to do.
Okay.
So, yeah, I've been involved in agriculture for my whole life, I grew up in the Pioneer Valley in Western Mass. Met Lindsay at UMass, and we were both there studying agriculture. We got hitched up in Agribi Berry in 2011, so I've been here long enough to gain a good appreciation of the town.
Okay.
You know, we've been trying to delve into some of the agricultural opportunities here. We started growing hemp this year, and that kind of parlayed into this host community agreement proposal. You know, been learning a lot about a very similar crop, and I think it's something that's really good for the agricultural community, and will definitely benefit the town a little more forward.
Okay.
Yeah, that's most of my story.
Yeah, and Lindsay also went to UMass with plant soil and sustainable agriculture, so we have priorities that live there, and have to farm, trying to farm it, get some hay and get some things, and build income, which is pretty tough in today's world, where you're trying to be a farmer, so kind of looking to branch in. A outdoor cultivator licenses, CCC.
The one thing I would ask, if you could submit to the administrator's office on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, is similarly, for an outdoor, what we had requested a previous applicant to do is provide, almost like a Google map, where you can kind of identify the parcels, and kind of identify the general area you're looking to put yours, so we can kind of relate it to the different neighbors and the different parcels. It would just be a good standard when we're reviewing this, to have all applicants provide that, to give us a better idea of what's going on. I'm familiar with Don Road, don't get me wrong, thankfully, you let me look at the hemp field about a week ago. So, I know you're really not near anybody, but...
Well, there it is.
I would still... Exactly. I'd just like to be able to make sure that we all get this chance to...
Where it is.
Now, all of those... All of these... Is this all yours? All of these fields opened up?
We can do a little bit better...
Or is that other people's?
Not all of it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do a little bit better presentation, but that's the idea.
Your parcel 101?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the bigger fields up by the road are not part of the property.
Oh, I got you. You can follow that one tree line there, and you're below it.
Yeah, and then it just goes on. So, it's 115, what, something acres, so lots of acres, and lots of woods, and the 100,000 square feet that we're looking at, coming down, the furthest fields, you know, from the entrance of Don Road, kinda quite a long ways off of any road and any town road and any visibility, because, you know, here's Hardwick Road, and here's Don, that comes down to Dead End, and the driveway just comes around it, down in here, so that kinda is what you need, because you want something that's a little...
Well, that might be enough, I think.
We can do that.
Would you be able to, Andrew, add this to the package, and then some color copies or color scan or something, to make sure that Greg and Dylan and I can all have that Do either of you have any thoughts on initial, before we start scheduling public hearings and all that?
Yeah, I mentioned to Ron briefly, I don't see anything with respect to the 3% payment, 3% for the town for the community impact fee. I just wanted to modify that a little bit, to say the 3% of the sales or the value, market value, if it's transferred, as opposed to sold, whichever is greater. Because as I'd said before, that there is a loophole in there, where someone could transfer if they had a processing facility, not actually sell it. And then where's your tax value with that sale? So, to say, to sell 3% of the sale, or 3% of the value, the market value of the product moved off the property at the day of the moving, whichever is greater, just modify it simply.
I got you. One thing I do believe I understood about that loophole that, I believe it was actually Dean brought up before, I don't know if it was in a meeting or just a conversation I had with him sometime, is anybody that makes a trade for less than what you would consider market value, the end receiver, the retailer, is paying a lot more in taxes, because they actually have to identify that difference as profit. So, the cheaper they buy their product, if they continue to sell it at market rate at the retail level, their profit looks much bigger, if they can't show that I actually spent the wholesale rate that would be considered market rate, but I spent a lot less. So, in other words, trading something for not market value actually puts potentially a higher retail cost, unless that retailer's thinking they can get a much lower cost. In other words, it really depends on who you are and how you're selling it, but I think there's a lot of regulations that make it hard for someone to take advantage of what you're suggesting is, a wholesaler is going to pay less to their host community in this 3%, because they're gonna actually sell their product or trade it for less than market value. Because they have to have somebody on the other end that may take that risk, unless you think... Tell me different, Dean, if you... And I'm not saying this is what you said, maybe I should rephrase it. That's what I thought I heard.
So, the inside scoop to this, because of federal tax laws, 280E, you can't write off the cost of goods sold at the point of sale on a retail level. So, the reality is, as a cultivator, or as a company, where you're doing this, it behooves you to create the value at the cultivation level. Now, having said that, and I told Greg, his concern is a really good concern, it's a legitimate concern, because if you did have a big company, and they wanted to kind of play a shell game, they could do that. So, the state requires that we have a seed to sale tracking system, it's called METRC, N-E-T-R-C. And that actually, from the time, you know, you bring in seeds, every time a plant moves, whether it goes from a vegetative state to a flowering state, you have to track it. Where it would come into play for the town would be, you know, then when you harvest it, you have to weigh it, and then after it dries, you have to weigh it again, because now you're able to, you know, you're able to account for the lost weight of it. When you eventually take that product and then move it someplace else, whether it be to a packaging facility, or if you package right on-site to a retail location, you've gotta weigh that again at that point. And it's all in the seed to sale tracking system. So, for the town, you could probably very easily solve your very legitimate concern by just adding language that you'll have access to their METRC data at the time the product leaves the facility. You'll know exactly how many pounds left in the facility of usable cannabis. And, you know, there are enough business, marijuana business journals out there, almost like the Wall Street Journal, that will tell you the spot market price of wholesale flower or extractable flower at any point, you know, the average price over the last six months. So, you could really just look at that METRC data at the point that the product leaves the facility and say, "Okay, there were 1,000 pounds, and the average wholesale price over the last six months has been $3,000." So, it's an easy solve, you can solve it very easily, but it's legitimate, really legitimate question.
So, I guess the question I would have, it's similar in this state. If you go buy a used car, you buy it for a buck, you're paying more than that in sales tax. They're taking the market rate of that, and they're giving you a tax saying, "I don't care if it was a dollar, the value of this vehicle was $4,000, and you're gonna pay me whatever tax rate." Are you saying that's not the case with marijuana? The state does not intend to do the same thing?
Well, they don't... They don't tell you how much you can sell your product for, but what I'm saying, from the town's perspective...
No, what I mean is, the tax rate is based on the market rate, not the actual sale rate, when it comes to used vehicles.
Which is what the...
And I'm wondering if...
They approach the town to take.
Okay.
They could say, you know, "What's the market rate of that product when it left the facility?" And there's enough data, there's data out there, easily accessible.
So, to say we have 3% of the sale, or the market rate, whichever is greater, just benefits us, and it makes sure that if someone did play a shell game, or traded for less value, for whatever reason, it just ensures we get the proper tax value. Or, for example, if someone grew their marijuana here and transferred it to their own facility to process it, and never actually sold or built their own facility, it's into facility, if no sale occurred when it left our town, we have nothing taxable. Period. Not a penny.
I hear you. Now, just to be that generic, though, I kinda would prefer, like, market rate minus 10%, because that takes away somebody's ability to potentially negotiate a deal, where if you're a smaller farm versus a bigger farm, and you're trying to sell your product to someone, sometimes you might have to sell it for a little... I don't know enough about the market, but you might have to sell it for less than what you wanted in order to get into that market.
Absolutely.
And then all of a sudden, you gotta pay taxes like you paid the... You sold it for the market rate, and so I'm saying that would be unfair, too. So, it would be something like the market rate less 10% to give you some wiggle room, so you're not like, "I'm getting taxed for more than what I actually earned," even when you weren't trying to get through a loophole, like he's suggesting someone could.
Right, and I saw that it seems though, if you look at the bylaw, and you look at the host agreement, you're really locked into what that is on what your wholesale price is for the goods. So, you're gonna be 3% on the wholesale price, which kinda gives you, you know, what would any reason for a cultivator be to give it away or sell it any cheaper than the current price that it's worth? And so, the...
The benefit is, if you're also a retailer in another town, selling to yourself.
Exactly, but we're not asking for that. So, the next step, if we were to ask for that, that's when that would be in the host agreement to cover...
Oh, no, no, what I'm saying is...
Cover the what-if we can't...
That's why I wanna put the host agreements across the board.
If you were like CPC, they have retail places they're lining up or have already started and framing it? Or are relationships with people that... I'm not gonna say it's CPC that owns it, but the point is...
No, we have Pittsburgh, we have our own...
Okay.
Pittsburgh.
So, if he sold his product that he cultivated here, and packaged, we'll say, and then sent it to his retailer in Pittsburgh, we're not gonna get the revenue for what happens in Pittsburgh. But he could potentially sell it there cheaper than he would sell it to someone else, because he's trying to reduce the double hit in the taxes in two different towns. I'm just saying, that's the concept of the loophole.
On a federal level, I would get killed in taxes. Killed if I did that. Absolutely destroyed.
Yeah, it just isn't a viable option for anyone to do.
No, and that's what I'm not getting, why?
You close a loophole, it's closed. If it's never gonna affect anyone, there is no reason not to put it in there.
You can't write off, at that, at the retail level, it doesn't allow you to write off any of those costs at a retail dispensary, because at that point, you're actually making a commercial transaction to sell the cannabis, which federal government still acknowledges isn't legal. So, you can't write off employees, you can't write off rents, you can't write off a mortgage, you can't write off any of those normal business deductions that you would have in a different level. On the cultivation side of it, you can't. So, all I'm saying that is, that would be foolish for someone who was vertically integrated, it would be foolish for them to do, because, believe me, the 3% off the gross sales would equate to far less than what you end up paying on your 280E.
Right, okay. So, that's kinda what I thought, a little bit, okay. I got you. It's still better for an owner, even if they own both levels of, to show the revenue more at the wholesale level than the retail level.
The cultivation side of it, absolutely.
So, is it something that we have to worry about in the host community agreement? Because it's likely that...
I see no harm to put it in.
Just to get the town of Berry, they're gonna spend more money anyway at the federal level, or they're just not gonna do this.
Well, if I may, I think it would behoove the town to add language into a host agreement that does address that, because who knows?
Something can change.
280E goes away in three years, and federally, the government says, "Okay, we're okay with this," then all of a sudden, it's a different landscape. So, I think Greg's idea of putting some type of language in...
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
It's just protection for the future.
And it's simple to do, it's really simple.
And it shouldn't impact anything here in this town at all, but if something changes in the future, it could. It could prevent having this issue in the future. And as far as saying it might harm someone, because they're gonna sell it for below market value, the state right now is under-producing marijuana dozens of times, under-producing what they need. So, there is no competition to sell it right now. Anyone that grows it can sell it, because the demand for it far, far, far exceeds the grow right now. So, it's never gonna make an issue where we're gonna hurt someone, because they're gonna be cutting their price to get rid of it, and have to pay a... They're gonna pay the market value, that's that. So, it's not gonna change it. It only prevents a transfer if it should become lucrative for someone to transfer the facility at a lower rate, because they can write those things off later. Just, it's a simple language change, and it just closes the loophole, and it sets it up for the future in every agreement, so we don't pick and choose, it's just... I brought this up, we talked about it when we were finishing the agreement with Tom, kind of an afterthought when we're doing his agreement, I said, "You know, we really should start addressing this." And I did mention it when we were doing Tom's...
And I recall that.
And I just think it's time, just put it in there, and it's not a big change, it shouldn't impact anything.
Yeah.
Because it won't change anything. You know, refer to the market, as he says, and the 3% of the value at the day of the transfer. It's traceable, it's easy, and it's definitive. It's not ambiguous, it's... There's no wiggle room, there's no... There's no way around it. You sell it and pay the tax, or you pay this, and if for some reason you sold it for half price, because it was advantageous in the future, then we get the market value tax. It's easy. It doesn't affect anything else in the whole agreement, which is, you know, pretty much the same as we've done before. That's all I have.
I'd agree with that.
Beyond that, I would say, I think it's beneficial to the town, the tax possibilities from this are substantial on an outside grow. You know, if this town had ten or fifteen grows, it would make a notable impact on the town's tax basis. It certainly benefits the town possibly by hundreds of thousands of dollars on this one grow on the possible three percent revenue. And if this was to be able to be moving forward quick enough so they could get in the ground next year, that is an extra year of taxes for the town, as opposed to holding it off and making it miss the next year. I know there's been some discussion about they'd like to try to get this fast-tracked as much as they can. And I'm comfortable with, like, we went much faster with Tom's than we did in the first one because we're comfortable with what we're doing and we see their language. And on top of that, we now have the planning board's bylaws, so we're not the only stopgap anymore. We don't have to be, I mean, we're still gonna be diligent, don't get me wrong, but we don't have to be so cautious and so overprotective because it's not only us anymore. There is another board, another whole set of bylaws that take place after our host agreement. So, our host agreement is just the start. So, I'm gonna tend to be a little easier with this host agreement. It has the language you want, we get the things that I wanna see. It'd be easier to get this out quicker, to let them start to process because they still have to deal with the other bylaws that are coming into effect, the planning boards that fall. Those are extensive. And I would rather see this get through it, rather see it in the ground next year. It benefits the town, it benefits him certainly, and it benefits the town. It will benefit the community, the people who work there, the jobs it creates and everything else. And obviously, if these facilities benefit the way I think they could on tax, we could begin to pay down some debt with it initially. If we paid off some debt that we're paying on, that low as a tax basis because we don't have to cover that debt out of our annual budget anymore. So, you'll see an impact on the small initially, but we could in the first year or two see a small impact on the tax base of this town, which would be huge for everyone in this town. I mean, this literally benefits the entire town. So, that's my argument for moving forward as quickly as we can. And my only other argument is, as I said, was for that language to add, otherwise, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with this.
The other thing we just need to do is just make sure that no pauses in here are in conflict with any other-
Right.
-bylaws. Not saying they would be, but we just need to do our due diligence to make sure we didn't create a conflict that eventually would be removed based on an existing bylaw. Things happen.
We could, no matter what, we have our initial notice for, we have time to review all this and run it, look at the attorney and match this to the other agreement to make sure it is in line. You know, we have a couple of weeks to do that before our public hearing comes up. And the question is, can we do two public hearings closer together? Do we have to have a time between them, or can we announce the two hearings so many days apart in advance? Once again, bearing in mind that we're not the only stopgap anymore. There's a whole planning board process that's gonna go through and scrutinize this. And, you know, I would hope that someday in the future, when everything is established and running smoothly, that since the planning board didn't back off the redundant laws, we back off our redundant laws because I don't want redundancies in any of these laws. As you said before, it's gonna make trouble for us in the future. So, we might review some of ours down the road. And if they're not gonna take any of theirs and remove them, we should remove some of ours so that we don't have redundancy. But that's getting sidetracked.
I would suggest that, what I thought the intent when I kept pushing for two public hearings versus the one required by the state was to allow for that second two-week group. From the first public hearing, gives us time to meet publicly and discuss whatever we learned from the public hearing if we needed to. But it also gives us two weeks to absorb everything that came into it. And at the next public hearing, we can hopefully come with the idea of final thoughts. And so, like, the first one is a public hearing where the applicant is pretty much telling everybody in the public, this is who we are, what we intend, what we're gonna do. We have a few comments, just to clarify whatever we think maybe the public might wanna hear, things like that. And then we wait two weeks, because at that point, hopefully, we're also mentioning things that then we would like them to include in a revision or something. And then we have another public hearing that's pretty much, based on the last public hearing, these are some of the things that came up, this is what we propose to address, here's what we're at, this is what we believe is the end. And if something else at that public hearing comes up we think we need to follow through with, then maybe there's another step in revising it. Otherwise, it's more like, any more comments? Nope. And then we make a motion to vote. So, for me, that's a four-week process just because of the, two weeks from the day they ask, we get the first public hearing in, then two weeks after that, hopefully, we close the loop, we're done. And that's really what I'm hoping is, in four weeks from the time someone applies, we're done. Which means we've gotta do our due diligence in between, so something you learn, you come up with some thoughts, the next meeting, we go through the public hearing, hopefully, we get through that if something comes up. It doesn't, any one of us can still pass questions to Andrew to pass to them even before that next public hearing to say, I know it didn't get discussed, but it came to mind, could you be prepared to talk about it at the next meeting? So, it doesn't have to come from the board as a whole when we're just asking questions of an applicant. Each of us can approach that applicant separately and ask those questions.
As can anyone in town.
Well, right. So, that's why I'm bringing it up. I think a four-week process isn't a big deal in a host community agreement if we can just keep it succinct and just do what we gotta do to get it through. So, that's what I'm suggesting.
My thought is, the difference between now and then, when we came up with that, is we were anticipating that the planning board may not be successful in getting bylaws in place, and we were the only. When we were done, that was it, the license was off, that's not the case anymore. But this, when we're done, it starts a process and they still have to get to the planning board in a very similar process, again, with public hearings in scrutiny. So, I, we don't need to have the same depth and extreme caution with all that time between our hearings because there is still a process coming from the planning board now, which didn't exist before. And that's what makes me more comfortable with shortening it up a little bit. As long as the language of the bylaw says that, and Andrew's gonna look into that today, I don't know if he got to, but-
Right. I mean, there was no, there was no clear written distinction that said the number of days between hearings that had to-
Okay. I didn't believe there was, and I thought that was the only thing we could do to shorten it up is we could have, we could say we're gonna have a hearing in two weeks, and then another one three days later. Announce them both now so they have more than two weeks' notice. And it still gives people input, and if there's further questions after that, they can bring those to the planning board at their stage.
Well, I see that as literally looking at it as reviewing it as a loophole to get around the bylaw. When you indicate two public hearings, public hearing implies a two-week notice. So, anybody that voted on it saying, yes, I like that general bylaw with two public hearings, had the feeling like that meant two weeks between each hearing and there's gonna be a process where people can have a chance to have their voice. To do what you're saying is, well, here's a way to get around that. We'll have a meeting on a Monday and a meeting on a Tuesday and be done. And then give it to the planning board to do whatever they want with. And I don't think that was what somebody in the general public voting on this bylaw at town meeting was hearing when two public hearings were presented to them as part of the general bylaw. And so, that's my opinion, is I wouldn't wanna do it that way, especially the first time. Because that was not in any way what I meant when I was talking about drafting this general bylaw. Was to have two public hearings that are advertised at the same time and you're just staggering it by just enough days to say they're separate meetings.
The difference would be-
Because there's no reason for the second meeting if you're only giving them two days.
That's not true. You may have people that can't attend one meeting. If you give two dates, you give people opportunity to attend one of the two dates. Now that we have-
But there's no public hearing to follow up with, what did we do after the first public hearing and what voices were? That was my point, is one, to get questions and comments, and one, to present the final agreement. I'm not saying that's how it was written, I'm not saying that's what you thought. I'm just trying to explain that's where I was at when I was, we were discussing and drafting.
I understand that at the time, we were the only stopgap.
And in the future, I'd like that to potentially still be an option. But you can't do that if you don't act like that now because what you've pretty much just said is, because we stopped doing it, we can't show evidence that we actually paid attention to the public and incorporated things into the host community agreement that therefore doesn't need the planning board. If we act as if it's not needed because the planning board put in, there's no reason for the town to ever review that and take that special permit granting authority away. Because we never acted on the concept that we were trying to present saying, the host community agreement gives us the same power to do all of that. So, to immediately stop using that power because you're saying the planning board is gonna do this, in my mind, is saying that, that's okay, that's how we're gonna move forward. And I thought that, I mean, from my perspective, I still think trying to create a precedent showing why the Board of Selectmen can be held accountable by the town means that they can have the same faith in us doing that in the host community agreement as they have in the planning board doing it via special permit granting authority. And you can't do that if we don't do it. We can't show them that evidence, we can't show them that experience to gain that trust.
I don't think we're doing any less diligence. We were the only stop between a license and the growers or retailers. We were the only instrument. And this is part of why I agreed with the two weeks and yes, and I like taking the two weeks and reviewing it again. We wanted to make sure that people got heard and make sure we did everything because when we were done, that was it. But that's not the case anymore. When we're done, that's when their process begins, when we're done. We are far from the process and we are the first portion of this process only, and there's a lot more to come. You know, I'm not saying back-to-back days, but we could certainly do them a week apart or five days apart. It still also gives, a lot of people, they might not be able to make the date you give. So, choosing a different day of the week so many days apart gives people two opportunities to make a meeting and be heard. And then, when it comes back to us, those are the things we take into account and modify and we come back and present them for the final in the signing. It just, I think, I think we have the ability to shorten it a little bit.
And I do feel like having two meetings, two weeks apart, seems like it's transparent. Everyone who wants to have their voice heard can have ample time to follow up with questions. And maybe having one meeting be on a Monday, two weeks and a day. A Tuesday, if somebody works every Monday night, maybe that makes sense, but that's prolonged even longer. I don't think it should be on a Sunday, but having two meetings roughly two weeks apart seems like it makes sense to me. But I also see what you're saying, to try to speed up the process.
There is, there was nothing after us before. We were, and there is a lot to come after us now because of the new bylaws.
The one thing though, generally, our meetings are recorded and televised. The planning board isn't. Public hearings are sometimes, depending on where they go, but this again, we are the ones to get the best chance to get the voice out to the town on a consistent basis. So, again, if they can't make the first meeting, they can go watch the video and submit emails or questions to someone and two weeks later still feel like their voice was heard. But if you schedule it three or four days apart, they're not gonna see the video, get their questions in, and have us have a chance to review it, to talk about it in three days. So, that's the other part, is some people participate, but they never come to the meeting. They participate by watching the video and talking to you on the street, or talking to you on the street, or emailing Andrew with some thoughts. So, that's where the two public hearings tie together, I think. Doesn't give them that chance.
Or read about it in the paper.
Right. Or read it in the paper. There's definitely people that'll do, and that's gonna take it four days, right?
Yeah.
Today's, when you write something up about today's meeting, it's usually in Thursday's paper this week, I always get my timelines.
Well, it could also be eight or nine days and not a full fourteen days. Pick a different day of the week and do it just shorter to something, I just, you know.
I just don't think this is something to rush. I'm sorry, I hear ya, but if someone's planning on doing this, they can't be expecting an overnight turnaround from anybody that's reviewing what they're presenting.
It's far from an overnight turnaround, this would be, but-
Well, in this town, it is, I'm sorry. We only meet twice a month normally anyway. So, to come and say, I would like you to review this, have it done in ten days, in the best-case scenario, which is kind of like what you're saying, well, not ten days, fourteen, seventeen days, the first public hearing and then three days after, is faster than anything else that comes before the Board of Selectmen. And I think with what we do, I mean, we haven't even written the policy for the general bylaws yet. Yeah, we need to race through this. Yeah, we gotta get that prepared, so when that shows up the next time, we can tell them, oh, and the fee will be. You know, it's, I think you're asking a lot for us to do when we got other things we're also doing as Boards of Selectmen. And so, I don't think going four weeks from the time we noticed to the second meeting is asking too much of an applicant. I mean, don't get me wrong, we wanna do our best, but I would rather make sure that doing our best gives everybody a chance to have a voice and it gives us a chance to really review it, think about it, process it, discuss it. So, that's where I'm coming from. But as a board, we'll make up some dates, we'll vote, we'll figure out where it goes. Each case specifically. I'm not saying just because we do one thing this time, it's a precedent for the next. I'm with you, we can learn to grow, we don't need to add more if we don't have to.
Claire's been wanting to have input if you wanna listen to that, she's been-
Hi, Claire!
I agree with Matt on the two-week. That is the way all public hearings go. It gives you a chance to go home and think about it, think what questions you wanna ask, contact people, maybe somebody might even contact Ronnie, you know, to see. And you've gotta give people time. It doesn't matter that you're not the final say anymore. So, the planning board, but you have to do your diligent work as Selectmen. You are the town fathers and you still have to do your diligent work. And to push things through, people will look at it just that way. Oh, they're trying to push it through. And that's not what you're trying to do. So, I really feel you need to keep that two weeks. You can't be having public hearings one after the other. It just, it confuses people.
So, if we don't have any more discussion, I would like to see it.
I have one little thing, so you know, because part of the conversation of the bylaw, and the only thing that I saw in the bylaw that has a time constraint, which I took care of today, which is, before completion of a host community agreement negotiation, the Board of Selectmen shall hold two joint public hearings on the proposed agreement, at minimum fourteen days prior to the first public hearing. Applicants shall erect a three-foot by four-foot wide sign clearly visible from the right of way, no more than twenty-five feet from the legal frontage stating the name of the proposed business, the type of license being sought, and the location where information related to the project may be found. Following the two public hearings, the host community agreement shall be adopted by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen, a tie of the voting members shall constitute a field vote. So, this was put up today, so we're covered for the fourteen days, which is the sign that is on the property because we need fourteen days, so if you pick a hearing, you need fourteen days from when this is up. So, if this is done today, you're covered. And what it says at the property, at this property, there is a proposed marijuana outdoor grow. High Hawk Farm LLC is pursuing a host community agreement with the town of Barry, and if approved, will be applying for an outdoor cultivation license from the state of Mass. The state of Mass limits it to a maximum of one hundred thousand square feet, which is equal to two-point-three acres. It will not be beziled from the road or any public space. Please respect the homeowner's privacy and not travel down this point, so that's the driveway. If you have any questions, feel free to call nine-seven-eight-six-one-eight-six-nine-four-six-four or visit one-fourty Worcester Road in Barry and ask for Chris or Ron.
Thank you very much for showing this, presenting it.
So, that's all set. I didn't say anything else, other than, other than a lot, a lot of them. This was the one that had a deadline for today's. And that's all set.
Like, is your homework in?
All right. I'm trying to-
So, I keep looking up there. We should just take that down? Two thousand nineteen?
I turned that around.
So, it's the very end. So, remember it was on the fiscal year, flipped it around, went to the calendar year.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't know that either.
All right. So, what it is actually is the flag is deciding. So, we're on the twenty-first, so twenty-eighth, fourth. November fourth would be the next available day. If it was advertised today, which we're not gonna get advertised at least until tomorrow?
Well, your-
Local paper, so three days?
It's gonna be Thursday, so-
Might as well just save the eighteen. So your next. Unless you wanted to have a special meeting just for that.
The eighteenth or the seventh?
Well, the seventh would be fourteen days from the, from the posting day. So whether or not you want to have exactly fourteen days, or if you wanted to say you're, you're giving it at least fourteen days notice and having it on the eighteen.
No, because that's really pushing it out there. That's adding two more weeks.
Yeah.
It's almost a whole month.
Or you had it on the, the twelfth and had it at the DPW meeting.
Do we define how the notice has to be?
Cause again, it's a public hearing. I don't want people thinking they're gonna crowd into a lunchroom.
Do it at six o'clock and have it here.
Is there something wrong with doing those two Thursdays, the seventh and twenty-first? Twenty-first is Thanksgiving, so that won't work. Oh, the twenty-eighth is, so the seventh and the twenty-first would meet. The shortest timeframe available if we're still sticking to the fourteen days between the two s- public hearings.
Notice, I mean, as far as it's concerned, if we. Publicize it tonight that we're doing, we put notice out. We don't have to full written on it.
Legal notices posted in a newspaper of general circulation.
Public hearing as defined in this would be that legal notice fourteen days in a paper or something.
Okay. Yes, I.
Your deadline for a legal notice for this week's paper is Tuesday at noon.
Tomorrow morning, we'd have to get that in for. It to be in the paper for Thursday, the seventh, or at least the dated seventh. Some of us. Get it on Friday, but that's okay. So I guess I would make a motion. Can you check your schedules, but I'd like to make the motion to advertise for two public hearings, the first on the seventh and the second on the twenty-first. If you think it'll work, if, if. I guess the next question is. Is that too far out to, can you guys confirm those dates? I mean, do you need more time to check your calendar to find out if those work, cause. I know I threw it out, but not everybody's sitting here with a, I know exactly what I'm doing on those two nights.
I can be available, whatever nights we're gonna, you know, we're doing the meetings, I can be available for it. I have nothing pressing anymore right now in my schedule, so.
I still do, but I'll find a way. Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Alright, so we will advertise a public hearing. Do we wanna do six thirty or seven? That didn't get discussed.
We traditionally do six thirty, but I don't know if it makes it easier for people at seven.
No difference to me.
Would it make a difference to you?
I'm saying the general.
No, either time works.
The general public, I don't know if.
You guys is thirty.
Keep it at six thirty.
If it starts a little bit later, you're covered versus waiting around for it.
Yeah.
Six thirty.
So make sure we get the advertising in the paper tomorrow before noon. November seventh and November twenty-first, six thirty, here in this room. If anybody disagreed because they didn't officially vote on the location, tell me, or if you think I need to put that to vote. I filled in a little, a lot of gaps after choosing the dates. I just wanted to make sure we're still in agreement.
Well, I assume we're gonna have our public meetings here anyways and cameras, why, why are we doing and where are we doing, so I, I, that would be, I would think assumed, but. We'll make sure it's in the notice that it's gonna be here at six thirty in this building.
And the copy of the agreement will be available online.
Yep.
Draft agreement will be available online.
The only other thing I guess is know that at that next meeting, we'll also talk again about how we might wanna rephrase that wording about the, uh. Three percent based on market rate or actual sale price, whichever's higher.
Yeah, it's time you just gotta go over the verbers that, when we all. Take a stab at it before meeting and save some time.
And if you think there is an appropriate market that you wanna base it on, cause I'm sure there's like five different people that think they know the market rate. You know what I mean? Some institute or standard that you wanna reference in your language. Just be prepared to present it so that we know like this is the place that we all agree is the number we're gonna stand on. Any further discussions regarding the host community agreement? Alright then, move on to the next item. We'll go back to the topic. Old business. Still looking at some of the financial policies and procedures. Are we, of the. Three items, financial reserves, forecasting and investments. Do we as a board feel comfortable reviewing any of these three today?
I don't know, I haven't, I haven't gone through.
Okay. Well, we'll table those. I would recommend tabling them then, give us all three a chance to review those better to be prepared for it. Claire, if you're interested, feel free to ask. It may or may not affect the, how the finance committee looks at stuff, so if you wanna look at those and say, does it or doesn't it? I don't expect it to, but I would definitely listen if somebody from the finance committee had something to say on some of these policies we're reviewing.
Are they online?
They're drafts that I think are just internal.
They're internal drafts, I'll, I'll share them if you will. They were the ones that the, um. DOR drafted for us and we did some modifications to.
You could even.
Yep.
Again, I don't think it's anything major, but. There's a reason you guys are on the finance committee and I'd appreciate your input. Similarly, where are we at? With the special events bylaw. Good night.
Ron, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. We do need to start making some movement on the special events bylaw. Would we like to put a little bit more emphasis on that at the next meeting and really start digging into it, or are we, uh. Do we wanna start talking about it tonight?
Well, we. I think we went through it and we're pretty happy with what we saw, but we were really gonna try to target it for the town meeting, right? Save the bylaw for annual town meeting.
Yeah.
So let's not press it.
So it's not a rationale, so okay.
I haven't gotten any comment yet back from anybody that's been posted on.
Yeah, I think we were pretty happy with it. We're just, we'll give it some time.
Go for it one more time.
Yeah, but, but we're not gonna put this out for a special meeting. We're gonna wait to put this in, 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 in an annual town meeting, so we have till. End of June to work this out, so it's really. Not pressing at this point.
Okay.
Since we're already almost eight o'clock, we might as well get through some of this.
Then let's, uh, how are you guys feeling about the. Choosing. The members on the fire station committee. I guess Greg, I'll ask you, I'm not gonna try to push you in any direction. Do you plan on participating in the appointments of this just because of your affiliation?
I discussed what I thought of, um, some of the candidates with, with Andrew, but in my reason for, but I. You know, still uncomfortable to participate in any way, I mean.
And I got you, that's why I was asking.
Five part per view is five part per view, so. You know, Andrew may, may not input. He, he, he'll throw his opinion in with whatever I told him, I'm sure, but I'll stay out of it completely.
Got you.
So, uh, one thing I did wanna kind of. Put for your consideration on it, you know, just before we, we decide to make appointments to it. One was, or basically both were consistent of the, the membership of the, of, of the committee. Right now, as it stands, it's basically, uh. Four members of the public and. Three members of the fire department, including the, including the chief, so two, actually it's really two members of the fire department and the, and the chief of the department. Since it's kind of a foregone conclusion that the, um. Site work is probably, is gonna be kind of coordinated mostly by the Department of Public Works. I don't know if you wanna make it a, a firm appointment to also have the DPW director on there. And given the number of applicants that we had from the fire department. Making it an offset or making it a, um, odd number of people if we wanted to add an additional member of the, of the fire department on there. I just always wanted to provide that suggestion.
We have a seven or a nine member?
It's seven as it's currently constituted.
Two of them right now are fire department, or is it three?
It's, it's two members of the fire department and the chief of the department.
So three.
So three and four.
Under our current standing, if we put the DPW superintendent on there, that fills in one of the fire department members.
Right.
Now, if you don't know, if you wanna ask about any of the people, about who they are, what affiliation is, I could, I would tell you guys about that if you would ask, but. I won't recommend either way for people. But I'm familiar with most of the names on that list. Cause most of those do have some affiliation with firefighting in their history. Which is, I think, beneficial to the list, but.
So did you have a second copy of the appointments or don't? I, I, I didn't see a co- a second copy.
It'll be in last week's, you have it in last week's.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm excited for the dementia appointments. See Sheila's put her name in, because that's tremendous.
I'll make it a full community.
Very happy to see her step up for that. Up and beyond her time as superintendent. Nice to see that community outreach from her.
Anybody here know James Person?
That one I don't.
James Person and Raymond Balzer Jr. Raymond Balzer Jr. is not directly affiliated with our fire department, correct?
I believe that's our.
Raymond Balzer the third.
I think that's.
He's the full-time fire department.
I think that's his father.
Right, so I mean. All I'm saying is he's not an employee of the town. The father.
Correct, that's my knowledge.
So the only two people that put applications in front of me, if I've got the right count, one, two, three, four. Of the eight applicants that I'm, got in my hand. That was in my package, that's it, and I thought we had more.
We have, we have one.
Fourteen, but the other.
Check fourteen, man.
Unless you're separating the fire department personnel from the other ones.
No, I kept everything paperclip.
Yeah, that's why.
And I pulled sides out.
Is, is it in the package that you left from the last meeting?
That's where I pulled them from. Cause I was pretty certain there was gonna be more.
Did the originals upstairs?
I have all the originals.
Um, you should just go and make a second copy of the specifics and be sure we have the.
You got fourteen?
Do you have fourteen, Greg?
Um, I don't have my last week stuck with me because I came late, but I wasn't planning to, uh. Be covered all with it tonight anyways.
That I don't have. If you got fourteen and I got eight, you got six that I can't find. Alright, I got those two. And a standard. Fleming. I did not have Dennis for some reason.
Glidden.
Not Richard Glidden. I have Zach Glidden, but not Richard Glidden, so. John Chase, I don't have. Jay, don't have him.
Thomas George.
I got him.
Jason, oh, Jay and Jason, yeah.
Yep, I got him, got him. I don't have Stanley. I have him, I have him. And Joe, so is that six? That's sixth and that is the difference between his list and mine. Thank you. The only reason I was bringing it up is of the eight I had, those other two were the only two that weren't fire. And I was sure I had talked to some people that aren't on fire that were, and I was like, I'm missing something like in my head. I probably misplaced it because I didn't have a chance to run back and grab my copy of everything, so I probably had some stuff I took home and then I left this package and that's why they only found. Part of my stuff I left here last week. Couple of things here I do like. I'll start with. I'm jumping outside of the fire people and the actual current town employees that I'm familiar with to talk about some others I wasn't. And actually it was this James Person. Related experience indicates involved with two firehouse reconstruction projects and multiple large scale projects. Current previous occupation, uh, facility supervisor with Massport Worcester Airport. And he's been on town service with the agriculture committee. I like the experience as a facility supervisor and also working with two separate firehouse reconstructions, so it, I like that. I have no clue, he doesn't say anything here about ever being a firefighter. So I think what it does is it presents somebody that's more about how do you manage a facility than. So it helps add that balance in the discussion of the seven members, just to say. Firefighter could say, this is what I need, and a facility operator could say, and this is what it's gonna cost you to run it. But if we do it this way, maybe it'll be cheaper in the long run. And it may end up making no difference to the fire person once they realize this other option is just cheap. Whether it's a, an HVAC system or a, an overhead door and access to the motor for the overhead door versus. You know, just that type of concept I know as a facility operator and a project. Manager in my experience in life. Project manager and a designer and architect does not always quite understand. The facility operator side. Don't get me wrong, I know our fire department and key members of it totally understand operating a facility. But they also understand operating a really old nasty crappy facility.
Hey.
And you're doing great with it, but I'd like to be able to say. Bring in someone that maybe has, like with Massport, where they have some money to. Provide better services to say, well, this is a way to provide what you want, but in a better way. And so I'd just like to counter. On our committee to kind of bring different perspectives, that's all.
And to give, that's why we'll, we'll get, if we talk about all the guys, Gibson, the background, there's, there's some of the firefighters and, and other town personnel, you may not know their backgrounds and what they've done of these. For example, Stan Driski was the Worcester Airport Fire Chief and he was in charge of construction of the new facility just a few years ago. So he's, you know, he's in there and of course we know former chief for Gousey's put his name in. While he was chief, he's probably witnessed at least a dozen firehouses around the state that he's toured. And watched and be built and can be constructed, what they've done that worked and didn't work, so he's, you know. Other than the fact that he used to be chief, he's seen more fire stations in person that were constructed than probably anyone else on that list. And a lot of the other names that are on there, some of them I know are firefighters or still are in other towns, which, you know, gives a perspective, although they're not our employee. And it's not their fire station, it, it brings a perspective that doesn't necessarily benefit them, but, but a knowledge on, on the firefighting side with. What's more important in the facility. So this is, you know, most of the names and even, um, you know, Dennis Fleming, of course, has his name in there, he's always in the plane, but you know he used to be a firefighter?
Yes.
Okay, so he's, has that experience too and in town and he knows a lot about the town insights and this, you know, there's a lot of good things. Uh, you, Jason Pimental's in there. Jake Pimental Senior's in there. His father was our deputy chief before. Um, and he, um, is in charge for all the maintenance facilities, the whole Quavon School District, so you wanna talk about some of those facilities and infrastructure. Costs of running and maintaining, uh, that guy's got tremendous knowledge of those things. that guy's got tremendous knowledge of those things. And, like I said, he used to be our deputy chief as well, so he knows the town needs better than a lot. So there's unbelievable depths of quality in these applicants here.
Oh, there is, and that's.
So we're gonna have a good committee, whatever you choose out of this.
That's the difficulty with our application, because it doesn't come with a resume.
Yeah, I just want you to.
It comes with what do they think to tell us.
I can tell you about what they're, what they bring to the table, and you guys can choose what part of that you think is relevant to it, but they all have some very strong things they bring.
These are all Barry residents, right?
I believe they all are, yes.
They should be.
I don't think, any, I don't know if Ray lives in town.
Is Richard Glidden? James DeVergiano.
Cutler Road, yep, there.
He's actually on New Braintree Fire. That's, that's.
Yeah, that's why I was questioning, but he's actually saying he still lives in, on Cutler Road here.
Yeah, that's our, that's our clerk's husband.
Because they all should be in Barry.
James DeVergiano.
Oh, we do, you're right.
As a no.
Well, he's also our, he's our fire inspector, our full-time inspector. So he's probably throwing his name in as.
Fire professional inspector.
But yes.
Applicant?
No, but what it would do is if you've got other viable applicants, it might be the one reason you go with someone else. Like, if they're both really good, like.
Go with the guy that lives in town.
Somebody's got more skin in the game. I mean, he does, it's his job, but other people aren't paying for it.
I don't think you should be taking somebody to volunteer on a committee from out of town.
Agreed, agreed. The only reason we would have considered this guy is he's still a full-time member of our fire department. But we have enough applicants that I think it's easy enough to say that what he can offer versus someone else that's also a member.
You need to be a resident of the town of Barry because you are paying the taxes that are gonna build this building. No, it's something we're not a town.
But you can throw a caveat, what if Van Gogh said she'd like to be on the committee, would we tell her no?
Yes, I would tell her no.
I don't know. There's, there's.
She wouldn't be on a committee for that.
I'm just saying, there could be someone that brings such a depth of knowledge, I don't, I don't think they're all from town, but, except for James.
It should be.
But, but somebody that could bring such knowledge to it.
Well, so far, so far, well, fourteen, James DeVergiano's the only one not from town.
Right, he's not from town, he's a.
Everybody else is. And we've got a nice range of age, experience. So let's just start with this. I'll throw it out, you guys can tell me yes or no. If we start with the fact that of the seven members, Bob Rogowski obviously says that he's, is one of them. Jason Pimental, representing DPW and fire, so he acts as one of the two firefighters right now. Not that it matters, almost everybody here has some type of firefighter reference.
You were adding him as DPW though, right?
No, because he's a member of the fire department, he automatically fills that slot. I'm not saying that it means we're not gonna get other firefighters. It's just, he does fill that slot.
He's one of the fire.
So he's the one filling the DPW of the seven?
There is no DPW requirement.
I just made that suggestion that you may want to consider.
We're just taking the recommendation that his role fits, so let's go with the fire chief and the DPW Superintendent. We got one more firefighter per the charge required. Do you have one more firefighter that you're looking at this list and say, he should be on it no matter what? I've got current members of the fire department. Joe Rogowski, he's still on non-call firefighter, right? Richard Glidden.
Not civilian, not fire department. Zach Glidden's a firefighter.
Oh, you're right. I got confused with New Braintree again.
You know, Zach, you have Stan, you have Joe.
We got Raymond Balzer III.
Ray, yep.
Dana Stoddard.
Dana, yep.
Tom George. We already listed Jason Pimental. James DeVerglio. I'm gonna set him aside right now because he's the one non-member, non-member of Barry. And Zach Glidden. So of the applicants that are on the fire department currently, Dana Stoddard, Tom George, Raymond Balzer, Joe Rogowski, Zach Glidden. Of those five, which one of those are, would you recommend as being that guy has to be on or should be?
Isn't Greg abstaining?
Or can you provide anything of those five, why you think one would be better than the other?
All I was telling you is the thing that different people bring to the table, like I said.
Okay, so.
You know.
If Greg is abstaining, he can't enter this discussion.
Sure I can.
No, no, no. What I'm asking him to do is tell me what he knows about what they bring to the table, not, so I'm changing my request.
I would question that. What's your feeling, Andrew?
As a special municipal employee. As a special municipal employee, I'm allowed to be involved in all these votes. I choose not to because of the perception of a possible benefit.
All right.
But I'm allowed to be involved in the votes.
You can discuss as a member of the public, but not a member of the board.
All right, I'll leave it this way, without you saying anything right now. What I do know is Tom George runs our sewer department. Dana Stoddard used to work for Sewer and Water. He now works for the Water Department Holden. So they both bring a level of DPW slash infrastructure connection and understanding. But that's pretty much also already covered by Jason Pimental, the DPW Superintendent. I don't know much about Raymond Balzer, other than he references his experience working for the department, but he doesn't show anything as building experience or design experience or architectural, something else to add to it. I'm not saying that he doesn't have it, he just doesn't show on the list. Joe Rogowski, I think, we know that just the forty-six plus years he's put into the fire department brings a lot of experience that in and of itself is probably something that you can't just overlook. Despite the fact, I'm sure he's got crazy amounts of education, he's learned through various things that you just can't list on a piece of paper that small. And then Zach Glidden. Again, I think he's a younger member of the department, right?
Yes.
Doesn't mean he doesn't have a good voice and can't bring something to the table, but I would suggest it may mean he has less experience to bring to the table. If I were to sit here, the next, the firefighter that shouldn't be skipped, I'd bring down now to three people. Dana, Tom, and Joe Rogowski. I would be inclined to ask Joe Rogowski. He's on the Sewer Commission right now. He's put his life into the town of Barry and to the fire department. And he's interested. He's asking to be on this. It's not something like some, we're just picking names out of the air and saying it, so. The next, the next, so right now, the third person on the committee I would recommend would be Joe Rogowski. So it'd be Bob Rogowski, Jason Pimental, Joe Rogowski would be the three fire department representatives required in the charge. Would you agree with Joe being on it? Do you, or just put the name on the list right now and we'll continue to narrow it? I got him in there. So that leaves four positions left. Not saying that the other fire department members are not gonna be on the list, but what I'm going to do right now is just set them off to the side while we go through some of the non-fire department members. Yeah, well, at least to find out of the public who else we'd like to bring into this. Jay Pimental. Lot of experience working in municipal facilities, operating municipal facilities, and I think he's been on. It lists him as the project engineer for the Quavon Regional High School, so he was involved with that. He's a licensed construction supervisor, licensed fire sprinkle, sprinkler fitter. Am I wrong? Was he on the Public Safety Committee? He didn't list it. But I can't recall if he was on or just had input during some things at different times, but he didn't list it, so I'm not gonna say he did that. He was on the Common Committee, and he's currently a member of the Water Commission. Dennis Fleming. He's got many aspects in the building trade. He's a retired director of engineering at the Department of Corrections. He's a licensed plumber, gas fitter, oil burner tech, welder. Twenty years on the Barry Fire Department, and he's also been on many boards and committees over thirty years. He's a well-known individual that puts a lot of time and effort into the town and cares very much about the town and what we do with our resources. Stanley Andruski. Druski?
Firefighter. So I said, he was the former fire chief for Worcester Airport. He's been a firefighter in town. He is lieutenant in the fire department now at Station One.
So he's a firefighter.
And he overs, and he oversaw the building of the new Worcester Airport facility for the fire department. He just built a facility.
All right, it's in previous town service, that's what threw me for a loop.
Exactly. I got confused. I thought it was saying like he had retired, but now I, I connect it to the name and the.
He was outside town.
Exactly. Once I read this again and thought about what you were saying, I was like, oh, I remember reading his name on his shirt. So I got myself confused with the difference Stanley, and it explains why I was wondering if he should be here or not. He did ask. So I want to make sure that that's there. John Chase, previous firefighter for the town for twenty-nine years, firefighter EMT, he's been on the transfer station study committee, currently is on it, that's not disbanded. Sewer and DPW Commission.
Obviously, a lot of knowledge of town, real estate in town now is what I think he does.
Yes. He's got a lot of experience.
A lot of different aspects there, too. Everyone has something they bring here.
We do. Back to Richard Glidden, we got James Person, who was also affiliated with the, as a facility supervisor at the Massport Worcester Airport. Raymond Balzer. All right, looking at the list of people that we've just named, I would have to say I would like to see Stanley.
Pick the list.
Is it Andruski or Andrisky?
Andruski, yeah.
Andruski, that's what I thought. Okay. I would recommend Stanley. Talented, succinct, seems to know what he's doing, knows how to, I, I, I like what I see from him and what I've talked, when I've talked to him, what I think he can bring. Just to clarify, former chief of public safety at the Worcester Airport, oversaw a $5.5 million renovation of airport fire station, attended various other multimillion-dollar project meetings over eight years.
He's an active member of the fire department, so he'd be fit for those same positions as Jason and Joe.
Or just an additional, because we don't have enough non-firefighters to.
You need four public.
No. We didn't say the other four were only public in the charge. I think we just said, three are firefighters, and we left the other four open.
So somebody said that to me.
I think, I think we'd written public. I don't know.
Somebody must have said.
But once again, now's, now's where you can make a definition, and it depends how tomato, tomato. James DeVergio's a member of the fire department. Stan is a member of the town. As everyone else is a member of the town. So everyone is a member of the public. And, you know, I mean, it depends how you're splitting that here. That's up to you guys.
But if it's fire or you're.
No, fire would consider, fire would allow James in.
I think it's lowercase and just reference the general public in the charge.
Four town residents.
There you go. Just has to be a town resident. Doesn't mean they can't be on the fire department.
Four town residents.
Two, two members of the fire department, four town residents.
So that would have, that would have allowed James to apply as he did rightfully, as a member of the fire department.
Right. So we don't have any applications that were, didn't meet the qualifications. We just chose not to choose one because we had more people from town, we did not have to review the other individual.
Which ones were from town?
Everybody but James DeVerglio is from town. So thirteen out of fourteen applications are from Barry.
But you, I'm asking who you had put aside. John Chase.
Put aside meaning to include or not to include when you say.
But there's four that you were just going through.
The ones that are eligible and not firefighters? Jay Pimental Senior, John Chase, Dennis Fleming.
James Person.
James Person.
Raymond Balzer Jr.
Yep. I think that's it.
And.
Oh, and Rich Glidden.
Right.
And some of them didn't have qualifications really. They didn't have any experience.
Yeah, Raymond, we don't know really. I don't know what Raymond, um.
Well, Raymond's got, he's an IT Operations Director at Hanover Insurance. So new buildings have network stuff. Doesn't necessarily mean it's not, that could be something he can bring to the table. Also, he's a director, which means he understands managing and all of that. So in other words, when you're an IT director, you know more than just IT. You have to work with the other departments in a place like that, know how to work together. So that's. He's also former president of the Barry Little League, Barry Youth Soccer, Quavon Youth Soccer, coach of soccer, Quavon Middle School and Quavon High School. So another active member of the community. James Person may be bringing something that's very similar to what Stanley was bringing. Facility supervisor, Massport Worcester Airport, but he's also been involved with two firehouse reconstruction projects and multiple large-scale projects. I'm only saying may because both Stanley and James Person list their connection to the Worcester Regional Airport or the Massport Worcester Airport.
No, Massport, yep.
And both speak of fire renovations and big projects. So one seems to come from a firefighter and chief of public safety role, and one seems to come from a facility operator. At the moment, I would still stick with my two coming from a similar area. I would probably still stick with the reference, recommendation of Stanley. That would leave us three more people to choose from. Do you have any, you should lead the idea of who would you put on next? And just because I'm saying it doesn't mean that's the list. I'm just, we can end up with nine people here, and at least we've narrowed it down to fourteen.
Were you saying that it was a, that it was a con, that person and Andruski were both involved with Massport?
You're saying repetitive, so you're repetitive.
More repetitive, potentially. And so I didn't want to just throw them both in, even though I can see where they both might actually bring a different perspective. Without really looking at what some other people in this town can also bring, we've got some, we've got a lot of really good applicants. And that's not even going back to the firefighters, like Dana and Tom, who really can bring a lot to the table from their own perspective. Tom's lieutenant, fire station two, regular down there.
Training officer, he's a training officer, yep.
Training officer.
He's in the sewer department, he's the.
And he's the head sewer department.
He's the head of the sewer department.
So, again, they each bring their own perspective, but is it possible we could also look at John Chase and say, well, or Joe Rogowski, and they both are in the Sewer Commission, so they can also bring input from the Sewer Department to this. or Joe Rogowski and they both are in the Sewer Commission, so they can also bring input from the Sewer Department to this committee as well. And a Sewer Commission can talk to Tom.
I look at both those applicants as less about the Sewer Commission relationship as to their life experience, what they've done. You know, John has been a firefighter for twenty-nine years. He does know the town because he's a townie. They're both townies, so these guys are both, they've been here all their lives, they know a lot about the town. So I don't, you know, being on the Sewer Commission is, is maybe helpful to that, I don't know, but I think the other
But it becomes redundant with Jason Pimental on there and Joe already potentially on there.
The other aspects of what they know about the town, I think are more more important than other, and what they do. Real estate, I don't know how that helps possibly with location of land, what's available. And siding, I don't know. But obviously that's
And that's his retirement job. He was doing something before that a few years ago, and I forget, but I think it was more engineering and he had to use his brain more. Well, in a different way. That is a very bad thing to say, Matt. Realtors use their brain. Please do not take that the wrong way. I just realized, I could have totally been taken, that was not what I meant. I was trying to give a little jab at John just for the fun of it and I realized
I'm sure he'll appreciate it.
Yeah, this is on YouTube.
Exactly. It's too late now.
John, John's sending you a text right now.
But you had something to say, Claire?
You're talking about putting firefighters on instead of the public people.
No, not really. Everybody's got fire experience except three people.
Well then put those three people on the, for the
What do they bring to the table?
You need ordinary people. You don't need all firefighting people.
I don't disagree, but we are doing a fire station.
If that doesn't matter. You need outside other people's feelings and knowledge and what they think about it. Especially people that have lived in the town. You know, they know what's going and how the Fire Department has been good. We've never had problems with them on that, but even location. Just because they don't have fire experience, this is a building.
I don't disagree. That's why most of my discussion has been trying to find out people that understand building that also fit.
But they don't need to fit as a fire building. Because a building is a building.
Okay. James Person. Facility Supervisor at Massport Worcester Airport. Involved with two firehouse reconstruction projects. Previously. That's what we know about him. And he's a Berry Mass resident.
You know what's his profession?
Facility Supervisor at Massport Worcester Airport.
That's accurate profession.
So he's got no watch.
Well, that's under the current previous occupation, education, special training.
It's just the one I'm not familiar with, so I don't know.
Right. And Raymond Balzer Junior. Management process owner is related experience, current previous occupation is the BS in Management Business Administration, IT Operations Director, Hanover Insurance, previous town service. Gets back to all of his sports stuff. Other than that, everybody is either related directly to a firefighter or previous firefighter or is a firefighter.
Or all of the above.
So those are my two options that are not directly connected to a firefighter.
What about John Chase?
He was a previous firefighter for the town for twenty-nine years. He's like Dennis Fleming in a way. He's done a lot for the town after being a firefighter, but he was also a firefighter for a long time.
And once again, now you talk about people who've been in town a lot of years and know a lot about the town. They know a lot about the town's needs, they know a lot about the situations, the personnel, they know the um, you know, because we obviously used to have three fire stations, we have two that we currently use now. Those two are both intimately familiar with all of that, as well as they were both firefighters here in town.
But they're not present firefighters.
No, they're not, but I'm saying, that's what, clearly I said you know, I like that some of these guys had past experience as firefighters, they're not anymore. It doesn't specifically benefit them to be on the committee because they're not firing now, but their understanding, I think, is very helpful.
Dylan is gonna make a recommendation for
James Person. Just as he's a, he's a little bit outside of this, these circles that everyone runs in, it might be good to have uh, a little bit of an outsider perspective on it. Seems like a professional with a, a lot of applicable knowledge. Just as a facility supervisor for Massport and Worcester Airport, pretty big job.
Yep. I agree. I'd put that on the list. The next one I would do, again, seems to be even though related to family members. Um, but shows a different thing with the IT Operations Director at the Hanover Insurance, uh, Raymond Balzer Junior. I would recommend that one. Again. Creates a little bit of a different perspective. That still leaves one remaining position. If the six we just named is it, I'm just saying. So we have multiple people involved. Now I guess the next consideration, not to say it's bad, but we do have to be a little bit careful. Whether it's just due to perspective or anything. We got Bob Rogowski as chief. Partly because of everything, experience, knowledge and everything he bring to the table, we brought in Joe Rogowski to this list. We have Jason Pimental as the DPW Superintendent. We got Jay Pimental that also has a lot of experience doing this stuff for the town. We do have to be careful with how many father-sons we put on this and the perspective that'll create.
I was gonna say, you could have had three fathers on teams in this.
Right, I mean, I was
Which is very unusual, yeah. Oh, four.
Right.
We have four father and son teams that applied.
The Gliddons, the Balzers, the Rogowskis and the Pimentals all apply. So
But that also says something to say.
With that said, we do have to be careful. Well, that's almost
Seeing that's
That's the firefighter life though. It seems to be a big family tree line that continues forever and ever. Which thankfully, otherwise
My, my sons didn't put in for that, huh?
No, they're not committed like you.
They know better than to put in for it. They would be bounced.
But with that all's put out there. And with the names we already put on the list. I would say I still see five names left that I would consider to be to try to stay away from too much conflict or too much of a thought of too many family and involved, is we're getting back to Tom George, Dana Stoddard for active on-call firefighters still on the force. And then John Chase, Dennis Fleming for their own experience, their own history, but are not currently active members of the Fire Department. And then Richard Glidden. Who's worked for firefighting, but with New Braintree. Not with Berry.
He was on a Berry in the past.
Okay. I should just say, right now, he's not with
He's not on Berry now.
On the Berry now. Not that it changes a lot because we work so closely with our neighboring towns, you guys very often are
Especially this last week.
With that, let's just say, if we're just gonna keep those six people, do you want someone with more the Dennis Fleming, John Chase side or someone more with Dana Stoddard, Tom George? Or do you want Richard Glidden?
Just Fleming or Chase?
Yes. You can just shuffle it.
You've already got seven, don't you?
But I have the list real fast.
I wrote down six. Bob Rogowski, Jason Pimental, Joe Rogowski, Stanley Andruski, James Person and Raymond Balzer Junior.
You didn't write down Jay Pimental?
No. No, I brought that up as a, I didn't wanna get too many father-sons on there and that's why I would have suggested putting him on, but I think we gotta spread it out a little bit more. So who would you suggest out of those or? You can pick anybody we haven't picked. I just meant out of the those seem to be the
Chase or Fleming would be a good addition. One or the other, I'm not not sure. They both have pretty long resumes.
Anybody else in the room not named Greg have input on this? Any thoughts? Any experience, any relationship with the two where you're like, I could see where this could be a positive or that could be a positive? I'm not asking you to say somebody's not good at something, but if you think they're good at something and you wanna bring it up, I'd appreciate it.
I can give you positives for all of these. Won't help, but yeah. That'll look at two ways. I'd pick seven like that. But also, I could shuffle that, grab seven and say, any seven are good. It wouldn't bother me either. That's why I'm worried about what you pick. I'll give my input to what I think they bring to the table, but
I
Flip a coin on these two.
Alright. I'm gonna make a recommendation. I'll list it all right now as a motion. Make a motion that we appoint Robert Rogowski, Jason Pimental, Joe Rogowski, Stanley Andruski, James Person, Raymond Balzer Junior and Dennis Fleming to the
Fire Station Building Committee.
Fire Station Building Committee.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
And for the record, that was all Dylan's choice all the way. He's writing notes down here under the table you didn't see the whole time.
You grabbed four, you got four of my seven off my list. I won't tell you which four, but
No, that's a really hard list to go through.
Bob Rogowski, Joe Rogowski, Stan Andruski, Dennis Fleming. James Person, Raymond Balzer Junior and who'd I missed? Jay Pimental? Jason Pimental.
Those were the names I had, just to make sure.
So yes. Done. Appointment to Age Dementia Friendly Committee, we have a Dave DeChamp and Sheila Mer both applied. Make a motion to appoint both of them to the committee.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I just wanna point out to have our superintendent, um, offer to be in a committee like this for the town, I I find that, um very, very generous of her time and very grateful for her to step up for that. I think that's very nice.
I agree completely.
Not that everyone's good for stepping up, but I mean, given what she does as superintendent, this is really, you know, going an extra step for the people.
And she can bring a lot to the table, just because of the whole concept of age friendly, she can create quite the dynamic of experience and bringing things to the table.
That's all I wanted to call out on that.
So did we call for a vote?
Not yet.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Application to be on the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee.
Good night.
Thank you, Ellie. Have a good one. Hillary Boudreau. Make a motion to appoint Hillary Boudreau to the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee.
Second that.
Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Request to use town property. The Maple Arts, Maplewind Arts. I buried that for him. October twenty-fifth from six to nine PM, this is Town Hall.
There should be two there. One for November.
And one for November twenty-second, five to nine PM, Town Hall.
We have any conflicts with those dates?
No.
What are they doing? They're just, they're doing art?
Dance and a ballet.
No, not crack them in November and a dance and this is Friday, actually.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to use town property for these two events.
Second that. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that the Halloween dance? Is that what that is? We've been seeing advertisements on the twenty-fifth.
Does it say?
October twenty-fifth, does that line up with the uh, PTO parade?
The parade's on Friday, which would be
Twenty-fifth, right.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Bring your own snack.
Dance.
I guess we'll see on Friday.
Exactly.
This Friday.
Okay. We called for a vote on that, right?
Yep, we did.
Okay. We got the two thousand nineteen Class Two Renewal A and B Auto Marketing. Make a motion to accept.
Second.
The uh, or approve the renewal.
Second. If you have mind explaining, if you do mind explaining to me in thirty seconds or less, what, what that is.
Board Selectman license, um, this is
Yeah, typically we do those at the beginning of the year. Took on this person this long to become compliant with their taxes.
Yes, and it's our job to issue these licenses locally. This is, um a reseller?
Yeah.
Not a, yeah, this is not a repair facility, this is a used vehicle sales place license.
Then we do things for repair places, tow places, everything, sale store, if everything has a license, it comes up with it. A list that you hear.
Did I call for that vote or just
No.
Motion? Uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
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 And then what's this, uh, Red Tomato thing?
Yeah, so, um you guys had, we have been going back and forth with the ABCC about the transfer of license. They finally got everything squared away on their end, so you guys have already approved the license, so we just need to send them the, the physical license, not the ABCs. ABCC has approved it. Here, I'll have me sign this one just 'cause it's a
Okay. Make a motion to execute the ABCC license for Red Tomato Pizza.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright, I got one little thing to bring up as a Board of Selectmen. Uh, note is I did go to the planning meeting last Tuesday after the DPW Commission. Uh, just wanted to catch up. I know they've been talking about, um taking the steps to figure out how to change some of the zoning in town, redo the zoning map. For various reasons. Some of the reasons are just the fact that the current zoning map cuts through parcels, so one parcel can be two different zones. And how do you properly deal with split zoning? How do you, you know, there has been a call by different members of the community to say, maybe we need more commercial property, maybe we need more industrial or maybe we need more R twenty for subdivision development versus R eighty where you gotta go through a whole process that turn it into R twenty. They, a lot of things they're talking about, so I don't even wanna get into any details because there really wasn't any. But they were kind enough to mention to me that on November fifth But they were kind enough to mention to me that on November fifth, they have a consultant coming in to, from seven to nine PM, I think, uh, regarding, uh, natural resources protection zoning. Um, I don't know how long ago, but there was a time in the past when they were working with CMRPC and an individual working with CMRPC helped them start developing this plan. Well, the consultant they're hiring is that same individual that helped them with building the original basis for this natural resource protection zoning.
Auto-shed force and things like that.
Yeah, and it'll roll into the open space and conservation plan and things like, so it fits into all the master plan concepts. So, um, I'm bringing it up because they also invited us, if we wanted to be there to hear what the consultant had to say, kinda get an idea of how the planning board's approaching this whole zoning thing. Um, they pretty much just said, you know, we're an open committee, come on up, get a chance. This is gonna be the consultant, so you're not hearing it secondhand. You can hear it directly from them. Get an idea of what natural resource protection zoning really is about on a municipal level versus a state level and how that works. Um, I'll be honest, I have no clue. So if I can, I'm definitely gonna try to get there, just so I understand it when it comes up next, what they mean. Um, but I'm always saying that, um, the invites out there and the notices, November fifth, they're going to have someone here to, uh, provide more information and try to help them, uh, yeah. Try to help the planning board better understand what they wanna do with that.
What date is that?
November fifth.
Tuesday.
It would be the, yes, the first Tuesday in November, their first planning board meeting. Election Day in any other year. Well, every even-numbered year.
Some reason that day is sending an alarm in my head, but I don't know why. I can't think of it.
I'm not sure either, 'cause it's got a red day.
That's it?
I have a comp.
It's a holiday on someone's world.
It's Election Day.
Election Day.
Municipal elections are that day in Massachusetts. For cities, city governments.
Gotcha, right, so City Council in Worcester. Now I know I've been seeing the signs everywhere for the last three months. Like I, I should be paying attention, but I wasn't. I was distracted. Um, another thing that came up, I'd like to just take a moment to say how much I appreciated, um, a young individual, age ten, who wrote a letter to the board of selectmen regarding a request for the town to look at. And I'll just read it. Dear Board of Selectmen, I am writing this letter to advise you of a situation regarding the sidewalk on South Street. I think we should have a sidewalk on the right side on the road going towards Quabin. The other day I noticed a track team from Quabin running in the road. I think that if we had a sidewalk, they do not have to run in the road. Also, it would be safer for the kids who walk back and forth from school and other citizens. I hope you take this under consideration. Thank you. Um, Lola Howard, I would say thank you very much for writing this, and I appreciate the effort and the time. Uh, you took to send this in to us in writing. Um, not many people in town do this. So I applaud you, and thank you very much, and we will take it under consideration as we continue to work with DPW and trying to plan out the best way to improve our roads and our sidewalks.
Is that part of our road plan with our complete streets, what we're talking about getting sidewalks?
So that was, um, that was listed, um, relative, I mean relatively high on our complete streets plan, and, um, I had actually submitted a, um, housing choice grant for the engineering for that project. So it's out there. We'll see what happens with it. Uh, but the engineering cost alone is around a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a long stretch, and there's definitely slopes and things that require retaining walls.
Yeah, that was really just a feasibility.
It's just over a mile.
Feasibility and conceptual, I think, of it, just to show how you, how you bridge that gap. So it, it, it was a high priority, but it's, I think it's a very large-scale project.
But a good one. I've got nothing more to say. I just wanted to make sure I pointed it out and to Lola how much I appreciated what she did. You got something?
I was just gonna highlight what, what Andrew has in his report, that the, uh, Halloween parade will be Friday, the twenty-fifth. I don't recall the lineup time outside, um, is it five o'clock?
That sounds right.
I'm not positive on lineup time, but, you know, kids should get there from school anyways, I'm sure, and the Berry Scary Halloween, of course, is running from five-thirty to seven-thirty on the common. Halloween running from five to eight, as we discussed. Um, as far as a bandstand, um, I've got a holdup on my strippers, because I didn't have my heat on yet, my barn, and the strippers don't work well, under seventy degrees. Um, so we're not gonna get it stripped at this point this year. There's different ones I've tried, so I've got my wood boilers on and warming it up now, so hopefully over this weekend I'll get another shot at. Trying the different strippers out, 'cause they just didn't act the way they should.
Yeah.
Um, and it took too long, and I didn't get, you know, I got no results out of them, which shouldn't have happened. I should've got some results, but it was, it was too cool to act. Then they sat there too long, they dried out. They're finicky. You need to get to them within so many hours before they dry, because they dry and it sort of rebonds the paint. Their, their wet stripper goes through the layers and the, the material becomes wet and falls off, like the skin of a pot balloon is what they're like. But once it dries out, it re-adheres and it's, it's just pasty and tacky and it's, it's gone too far. But because of the temperature, I left it on a long time, and it dried out before it had any effect, so when I get some heat to it, I'll try them again. Um, both of these are, are pretty mild as far as, you know, they're biodegradable, non-toxic strippers still. Once you strip a stripper, then, if I go beyond this and I have two different strippers, try a paste form and a gel form of very harsh, live-based stripper, um, which I'd rather not have to use if we don't, you have to, but, um, and I haven't gone far on the handrail, 'cause I'm using that handrail as my stripper guinea pig inside the barn. I'm using it to strip paint off of that, um, before I go work on that, so. It's, it's going, I'm trying, but I've got a, got a little hang-up because of the temperature. The boiler's lit, and I should be keeping heat out there, and I should be able to have the, the workshop up to temp and get the stripper going this weekend again.
I appreciate the effort. Thanks very much.
Apologize, I wanted to have it done sooner than this, but I, I do, at the very least, I wanna get it, figure what we're gonna use for strippers, so even if I can't strip till the spring, um, at least I wanna be able to know what I'm gonna do, so I can rebuild this handrail and get it reattached before. Um, you know, I'd like it back on in a couple of weeks, so it's, it's back together, and, you know, whether I go around and try to tighten up all the handrails now, or, or work on it this spring, they all need some attention to tighten up, but. Um, then I talked to the contractor doing the cement mark, and he does, he does say that we'd recommend some work, but with the cracks it would go through, and the water came through, it caused some rusting on some of the rebar, it's made some spalling in the concrete underneath, so there is some inside repair work to do. Um, cosmetic more than anything at this point, the structure's still there, but it should be addressed, it should be covered up. You need to treat the rebar, um, with a zinc paint, so it doesn't continue to rust and make more failure. So it's something we will still have to address after this outside repair is done. He's, um, planning to use a full, um, membrane over, over the surface before resurfacing. So we'll ensure we will not make water impregnate in the future. I talked with Flo but up there, um, just to see what he was doing, what he was planning to do. Uh, the step he couldn't repair on site, uh, it crumbled when he tried to drill into pin it. So he's pouring and casting a new step, um, at his shop and, and dropping that in, so it'll be a whole new step instead of a repaired step. Um, then, yeah, it seems, seems pretty competent, and, um, we'll have to pursue a, a number in the future about doing the repairs underneath, um.
Yeah, and, uh, you say, I know he was able to at least get the sealant on the stairs, except for the one that he had to re-pore. Uh, but at this point, the, he's lost the weather, so, um, the, uh, he left enough of the, uh, the compound to do the final stripping, or the final coating on the stairs, so that when spring rolls around, basically say, we could just have somebody locally just put it on.
It's like the paint finishes. You need a certain, most of the concrete seals still, they're almost like a urethane. You need to have the proper temperature. Like this time of year, if you try to refinish your deck, it's crazy. You just won't get the wood dry enough for it to bond. It's gonna peel off on you.
And then you also need for certain things like urethanes, cure time is the issue. The temperature dropping during cure can also ruin it.
Well, you can have aderxes in the paint, and the concrete may get cured, but the concrete also has to cure to a certain dryness before you're gonna treat it. And basically, two weeks that happens, it gets about ninety percent dried. Then over its lifetimes, concrete is always dry. I don't give it a hundred years old, it's still drying. Uh, but it's, it's, it's-
Not truly dry until it's powder again.
Yeah. It's, it's just, it's just the way concrete goes.
That's the new, that's the new four.
But depending what we wanna do, depending we wanna do, if we wanted to address the inside stuff, um, my guess, like any contractor trade, winter's a good time to catch people when they're slow and then maybe, you know, see if we get a better pricing in winter, and see if you wanna do repairs on the inside. It's really just two or three-
But it's an unheated space inside, so.
Yeah, but you, but he throws a space heater in there, it warms up like, uh, he can, he can put a space heater inside and warm that whole thing easily.
So stairs been repaired.
Okay. Nice.
Now, those were all independently cast steps. They weren't cast in place. They were individual steps placed, placed in and cemented, and as each tread was, just its own tread, so he literally took the one bad one out, re, re-put, cast one and put it back in place. They were never a preformed set as, as a one-piece. It was always multiple pieces. It's kinda neat.
You got anything?
Off the saving.
Anything more?
No. Patriots, Patriots have already kicked off, so.
Motion to, uh, does somebody wanna motion to close this thing?
Make a motion, Lee, John.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.